Good evening. Today is the twelfth meeting of the year. Today is August eighteenth twenty twenty-five. Julie, can you please read the presiding publication?
In compliance with the chap- with chapter two thirty-one of Public Law nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building in sixty-one Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January fifth, twenty twenty-five, posted on the municipal bul- building bulletin board, the borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Streets, South River.
Welcome.
Benagindi?
Here.
Councilwoman Valas?
Here.
Councilman DeSantis? Councilman Diz- Dizimian?
Here.
Councilman Tina- Tina Kopolis? Councilman Gortenski?
Here.
And Council President Sayula?
Here.
Please stand up for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment's silence. You may be seated. On the agenda today, we don't have anything listed on your presentations, but I have invited Assemblyman Robert Ker- Kerbencik and Sterling Stanley to our meeting today. As you all know, we have been working diligently with the county as well as the state to raise funds, grants, especially for the water lines and water infrastructure, which is in dire need of replacement. This is just a step for us ahead with us working with the county as well as the state. Assemblyman?
Mayor, thank you, council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to, what you all know, announce that we were able to secure a million dollars to help fund the renovation of your water pipes and system, sewer system here. And it was a pleasure and honor for us to be able to work together to help attain this. And this just shows how we work with local communities and within local government to be able to do this kind. And to be able to bring this to South River is a major accomplishment, especially with this large amount of money.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to come here and speak about this. This was a collaborative effort. I speak with you and understanding the needs for the community. This is, like you said, this is the first step that's going to improve the quality of the water for everyone here in South River, which is so, so important. And this is a, it's a good step and we're honored to be here today to give you a million dollars.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
We'll take it.
Back to work.
Yeah, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
We have nothing for agenda session tonight. We are going to go into reports. See you, me, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief update on the capital projects for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four local aid programs. Contractor has milled, paved, striped, and signed all the roads, so we've even worked on completion. We sent a letter to the DOT to request a final inspection for this project. For the twenty twenty-three local transportation project, our office submitted plans to the DOT. They had some minor comments. We resubmitted back and we're waiting word on their approval. The twenty twenty-five local aid programs, our office is in the design. We should have, expect that done shortly. Twenty twenty-five electrical substation maintenance, we are working on the bid documents. The DEP stormwater assistance grant, our survey department is currently working on this year's portion. And for the two, uh, DOT municipal aid applications, we submitted for the twenty twenty-six grant. That's all I have.
Council, any other discussion? Gerald?
Yeah, Mayor, two things. One, the borough has agreed to a contract with the sewer union. This has been going on for a few years. This is, the contract goes back to two thousand twenty-four and goes through twelve thirty-one, twenty-six, so every union contract in the borough is now settled and we're done. Uh, one last thing, too. There was a bill change. Once you got a revised bill, this is paying SPCA, so we added that to the bill that came in. We don't want to wait five weeks in next meeting, so that's the only change.
Anything for Gerald? Uh, H?
Uh, the only thing I have is Monday, September first will be closed for Labor Day. There'll be no yardways to pick up that day.
Thank you. Council, anything for H? Uh, Andrew?
I've met tonight, man.
Uh, Julie?
Okay.
Art?
Just a couple things there. Uh, two, uh, resolution two sixty tonight. Contracted grant is, that's a contract we're going to be able to take and many of our permits and, uh, applications that are on the website and make them fillable on the website and submitable on the website. It's gonna take a little while, um, people feel, go on their computer, fill out the thing and submit.
Users run right through there, then they would get notified what the fee is and pick up the permit, so that'll speed up things.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to bring up, that there have been, um, a lot of phone calls about the letter received from LEW Environmental, uh, lead paint. We put up a, a piece on the website today explaining it a little more. Uh, LEW came in a presentation here. You can use any environmental company you want. You don't have to use LEW, you know, you can do better with their fee. This is state laws, not a municipal law. And there's some confusion. It's for renters. But even if you have a house that you are renting, that house would fall under. But if you live in a single-family house yourself and you were built after seventy-eight, you don't have to do it. And a single-family resident owner occupied doesn't have to do it. So we put up a little, uh, blurb about the website to better explain it. But they're not exclusive to the borough. You can use whoever you want and make better deals somewhere else. But they, they are doing database, so if they use somebody else, they have to get the certificate from a certified let contractor to the borough. Some department will let that note it on the, uh, or have a listing of all of that things that we have to submit to the state. That's it.
Council, any other questions? Uh, Councilman Krasinski?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Office on Aging, their schedule is not out yet for the September month. Please, uh, go on the website and everything like that, too, to follow up what type of activities that they're gonna have. Also, if you're not a member of the Office on Aging, please fill out the form because they cannot give transportation to any of the seniors or anybody who just calls for unless they're actually a member listed with that Office on Aging. With that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valas? Okay. Uh, South River Day will be taking place on Saturday, October eleventh, from twelve P M to five P M on Montgomery Street between Johnson Place and One Side Avenue. It will include food vendors, a petting zoo, entertainment, along with inflatables and fun activities for the kids. Any interested vendors, entertainers, community groups, churches that want to participate, that haven't gotten in touch with them yet, please go to the website of culturalarts@southrivernj.org. That's all lowercase and no spaces. So we look forward to doing this. We decided to do it in the fall, as long as it's too summer, so it was just a thought. So we, we look forward to doing this and, and, uh, it won't interfere with any football games, since they played the night before somewhere else. And we're looking forward to having everybody come on out. And I hope to see all of this variety of fireworks at any stadium. Those festivities start at six thirty. There'll be food vendors and, and different things I can't ask for everybody to see. And then I guess the fireworks go off at nine fifteen. So there's bleachers there now and should be, should be a good night. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman DeZimian?
Um, TV thirty-five, working with Sal. They're gonna be recording the Imperial Music Center Band, um, at their November concert. That's a request by them. That's a great thing. Um, it's a free concert every Sunday. The next one is September seventh, two P M at the Imperial Music Center. Thanks, Sal, for, um, planning to, uh, do the, fill in their request of having it recorded so people can see it down the road. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. House President?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you all know, August first started our new recycling with the county. Um, county handed out bins for everybody. Biggest thing is there's no plastic bags are allowed in these bins. The county will only take a county can. They will not take any extra cans that are put out there. So only the blue county cans that were set, that were distributed can be used. They gotta properly be placed on the streets. Make sure you follow all the directions on the can with the wheels facing the house, so it's an open lid. Lid's gotta be closed, so if you have too much in there, you have the lid open, they may not take it. It's up to the driver. And, you know, if any problems do arise, RDPW has nothing to do with the county recycling. You can call the County Recycling Center at eight hundred four eight eight six two four two. Again, it's eight hundred four eight eight six two four two. Give the county a call if you have any problems or questions, uh, any concerns. Just give them a call, not RDPW. EDC is having a meeting on Wednesday, so I'll have more information about that.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. A whole line, I'd like to open this to the public. I think you have five minutes. State your name and your address.
Mayor Dalsel, my name is Christian. Um, I just wanted to address, I was viewing, uh, one of the council meetings.
Is this your address?
Oh, my address is six Anderson Street. Uh, one of the meetings, uh, one of, someone in the public came up and asked, I believe it was Joe, his name, and he asked, uh, where, where did all the six hundred thousand dollars allocated from the electricity go? So I actually reached out to a couple of you guys in the city, so I just wanted to know. Uh, this got allocated to the parks, to the road improvements, and also, um, some of the debt. So that's something important, I think, that you guys, uh, should mention that will be due. That's how people are more aware of where this money is going. Um, you guys are doing great work, especially with the million dollars that you got, guys got from the assembly, so that's, uh, that's great work and, um, looking forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
Good evening. You haven't started, Gerald? Something you might have said already, and this again, about Collins Drive, and I saw it being quote. Yeah, I got a wireline to be able to run, basically, to stay. Yeah, it's the safety of the kids. Well, there's three thousand plus kids in the, uh, in the park, I guess, or more, I don't know. But three thousand is good, yes. Their safety council is as much as anybody else's. It was a good sign. I mean, they had, uh, the road break. Uh, South River had some children. When time is spare, drive safely. And that's a good thing. Then he said that people are going the wrong way out of the road. Is there a problem with the police department that they can't handle?
I have a question, please.
What's that?
There are thirty-two police officers in this town, now thirty-three. They work different shifts. At any given one time, you have three squad cars down the road covering two point seven mile radius, approximately eighteen or nineteen thousand people. At any given one time, you have four schools going. That's assuming it's not the summer. Yes, I think it's not easy for every single police officer to patrol every single road constantly, twenty-four, seven. They go through the roads like normal police officers throughout the whole entire town, where even if there was a hundred police officers on one shift, still impossible for them to patrol every single road.
I understand. I mean, uh, the, the limited resources, it is. Then he came up with saying that the road is a service road. Did you ever Google what service road is?
I actually Googled what the road plans were and didn't make sense.
Well, what I heard was the road was-
That's what you heard?
This, yeah.
I had an option.
This is from, uh, the someone I had to do.
What's up?
Originally, was the house supposed to be put there?
No.
Yes. Doesn't, I heard it was a house supposed to put there and this, the councilman there said that have a full connection, one directional way. Then the people complained about that, which was justified, so they made it one way. And it wasn't open traffic until all the construction and all the service did let people around. Until you came out, so that road, uh, that, uh, road should not be built. But you came out with no reason, why would a road should have to be built? You had three or four mayors, twenty-plus council people, all voted for, have this road. I mean, now, then, you know, like you said, you're limited resources. So as a first responder, right, your department, they could be serviced for that. You know, you, how do you plan? I mean, you have, uh, two diligence for this thing is, you know, it's like, oh, whatever answer we have, we'll multiply by zero and add the desired result, we're close. But last month, you commended two police officers for saving the baby. Now, you think that same situation, you put the police officer on Collins Drive. He has to drive six hundred feet versus six thousand feet if the road is open. It's always six hundred. But it's not only Monticello that's, uh, that provides, whose roads are, like, uh, you have Monticello, Rotunda, Independence, Capitol Court, Charter, Samuel, uh, Lark, uh, Red, Red Beach, Veterans Place, and even we have the Department of Public Works. You, it would save thirty seconds on, if that road is open. And vice versa, if the, if the police officer was on the south side, uh, the east side of that road, you know, gets calmed, tarry, first animal, second animal, you don't have to do a second. I mean, you could save time. So as a first responder, when I talked to the chief, the fire chief, he basically says time is essence. And talking about fire, in, uh, last, I think, last month, um, I thought you said like ninety-six percent of the fire company is Station One. Well, it's okay if everything is perfect. But, you know, you had, uh, white, uh, was closed, the sewer connection was closed, and the power lines were closed. So that makes some, the prime, uh, the prime station to cover that area, they'd be there faster. But now to have to drive around for a fire there, that's two extra minutes. And as you know, as a firefighter, every minute that you don't get water on that fire, it's, the fire spreads exponentially. Now, if you got, uh, the fire gets twice as big, it's not just twice, it's harder to put out. It's over four times it's harder to put out.
All right, so your, your time's up, but I understand what you're bringing to my attention, and I look forward to the next council meeting, which is September twenty-second, if you'd like to bring up more.
Now, I'm gonna bring some signatures here, and I think, uh-
I'm looking forward to it.
So, I mean, now, if you had that, your situation, please ask one other bit, and I'll take my time's up on that. This doesn't concern that. The bush in front of the, uh, municipal building there, boarding in, uh, Washington, the bush, there's a tree, uh, right there in the corner. If you're, you find it, you're in a SUV or a pickup truck, you can see over it. If you're in a low, low, low-end car, it's hard to see, the car's coming north on, uh-
Take a look at that, please. Hey, can you take a look at that, please?
I mean, yeah, you just say, say, yeah.
Transition life.
It's, Gerald.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Anna Sancho Salva, I live at twenty Robert Street. I actually came here today to address the water issue. But after hearing these some demand with a million dollars, I want to congratulate you all, especially you, Mayor, and the council for working so hard and building things. The water is an issue, and it needs to be replaced. And I'm just glad that it's moving forward, and I just want to say I look forward to working with you all in the future, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
John Risco, I'm sixty-three main street. I'm in lieu of this, uh, lead testing, so this is a true thing that we have to get out.
If you're a renter, if you're a renter.
Well, I got, I, I have a two-family house with my son. There's on one side. How many houses in the boroughs if I consider it a mansion?
Do you pay rent?
Yeah.
No, I'm not going, I'm not going there. If you're not a renter and it's owner occupied, you just have to notify them that you're not a renter, that's it.
So, so are you gonna turn all the information for like-
Right, they'll take you off the list. Yep. You just call the company at the bottom, because they're keeping the registry.
So this is a company?
And if you read the letter, it says some of these may have been sent out, assuming-
That's the kind of guy that's-
Because the address on your tactical might be different than the ad- address on your letter.
So if you call this, then we'll set up a company?
They'll take you off the list, but-
Or you'll have a company come look at it?
Yes.
Okay, so and then also you have to have it done by the twenty-second and you get a thousand dollar refund?
No. You have to have it scheduled by the twenty-second.
On the schedule.
They won't, they'll do it by the end of the year.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you for that information.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? First of all. Second?
Motion closed, public?
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilman Krasinski. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we're going to go into marital appointments. Uh, we have two redevelopment adversary committee. I have put on Nick Johnikopoulos as our liaison, Rui Baptiste, Joseph Highland, John Frost, which is on the land use board, and myself. And then for a human relations commission, we have Raj Cynthia. Uh, then we're gonna go into consent resolutions. Julie, can you please read the twenty twenty-five, two forty-nine to two seventy, please?
Where a resolution, twenty twenty-five dash zero, and authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consult agenda, I'm sorry, consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it and is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same or individually act upon. Consult resolutions twenty twenty-five dash two forty-nine to twenty twenty-five dash two seventy. Uh, two forty-nine authorizing the res- res-
Okay.
Okay, then.
It was like acquisition.
Acquisition, uh, funds for payment to the custodian of the school monies. Two fifty, approving an agreement with South River Sewer and Water Association. Two fifty-one, authorizing an abandoned vehicle auction. Two fifty-two, approval of special events permit to Saint Mary's to be held on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Two fifty-three, authorizing the Borough Club to waive the special events permit fee for Saint Mary's. Two fifty-four, permit, uh, permit a voluntary tanning fundraiser to support the Head Over Heel Parent Association. Two fifty-five, authorizing a block party for Heritage Landing on September sixth, twenty twenty-five. Two fifty-six, appointment of Tyler Stiles as Laborer A for the sanitation department. Two fifty-seven, appointment of John Brano as Laborer A for the sanitation department. Two fifty-eight, shared services agreement with the Board of Education for School Security. Two fifty-nine, shared services agreement with the Board of Education for Special Events. Two sixty, authorizing the execution of contract with Grankas Inc. Two sixty-one, property tax refund for the toll disabled veteran for Elizabeth Street. Two sixty-two, property tax refund for the toll disabled veteran, twenty-two Belmont Avenue. Two sixty-three, property tax refund for twenty-two Belmont Avenue. Two sixty-four, property tax refund, S Brothers Incorporated. Two sixty-five, authorize certain utility refunds. Two sixty-six, accept, uh, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five regular and executive session minutes. Two sixty-seven, accept August seventh, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes. Two sixty-eight, authorize the bills and claims list. Two sixty-nine, redevelopment investigation of the Auburn Woods area. Two seventy, redevelopment investigation of Woe Joane. Uh, so, yeah, is it?
Do you do consents? Second? Motion by Councilwoman Valas, second by Councilman, Council President Seola. All in favor?
Aye.
All in?
Roll, roll.
Go ahead.
Councilman Val- Valas? Uh, Councilman Diz- Dizimian?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Council President Sayula?
Yes, with the extension from two fifty-eight, two fifty-nine, and two sixty-eight.
I'm sorry, you said two fifty-eight, two sixty-nine, two sixty-eight?
Two fifty-eight, two fifty-nine, two sixty-eight, yes.
Your name's not on here, you spoke to-
No.
No?
Right.
You good?
Yes.
Let's open it up to the governing, uh, comments. Start off with, uh, Councilman DeZimian.
Um, this Friday is our end of summer fireworks. It's a great, uh, event to go up, and there'll be vendors there. Come up and enjoy the evening. Um, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valas?
Um, school is opening Wednesday, September third. Please be aware of the added children that will be walking, bicycling, skateboarding, mostly, but they will be. Um, I know in my neighborhood, we will be watching to see how the parking goes again this year, or the illegal parking goes again this year. Sorry, but it happens. Uh, but just be aware, there're gonna be kids walking. Be careful of the traffic flows, all the new stop signs. And be aware of the crossing guards. They're in the middle of the street to watch your kids. They're not there to get harassed or to get abused, or to sometimes just get you by a car. Uh, I mean, I'm on a corner by a school, you all know. It is dangerous for them sometimes, so just be careful. And just pay attention, just be aware. And that's all I have.
Councilman Krasinski?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, uh, police, our fire, Robert Wood Johnson, uh, RDPW, for all the work that they do throughout the township and, uh, keeping us safe and clean and protected. Um, with that, uh, the only thing I really have is, uh, this weekend for the end of summer festival. And, uh, on nine eleven, we will be having our usual ceremony at Daley's Pond at the nine eleven memorial. That's gonna be at six thirty at Daley's Park, and then, of course, at the firehouse at Station One on Jackson Street with the fire companies for their ceremony. But then, I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President?
Nothing to stop.
Thank you. Uh, as Councilman Krasinski said about nine eleven, please come out and show your support. Daley's Pond, six thirty, um, one of our own, uh, person that, uh, horrible day. Um, I also like to thank, uh, Assemblyman Sterling Stanley and Stanley Sterling, I was gonna mix up there. Um, Sterling Stanley and Robert Kerbencik for the one million dollar, uh, water main replacement. This is just the beginning to, uh, helping this water, uh, project move forward. Uh, this town is in dire need. Uh, we are working on so many more project, so many more grants to make, uh, it easier for the residents when we're about to break ground. Uh, in a couple more weeks, school starts. Please remember to drive carefully. Now, it's not easy, but, uh, especially now, these kids are out with motorized scooters and bicycles. You know, you never know when they're zipping paellas, so please look both ways when you're pulling out your driveway, especially when you're pulling out your driveway. Uh, at our last council meeting, we welcomed, uh, four new police officers, uh, to our police department, Derek Whitaker, Giuseppe Constanze, David Martinez, and Brianna Diaz, wishing them all the best as they kick off their journey at Cape May County Police Academy today. They started their training. That runs through Friday, January ninth, is when they graduate. Good luck to each of them, and we excited to have you on board. And, uh, Labor Day is upon us. Please be safe with barbecues, gatherings, uh, loud music, you name it. Uh, we are going to go into executive session. We are not going to be acting on anything, uh, therefore, so if you'd like to leave, you're more than welcome. You wanna stay, it's up to you. We are gonna go into another room. Uh, Julie, can you please read twenty twenty-five dash two seventy-one?
I believe I'm open. General session, twenty twenty-five dash two seventy-one, where section eight of chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, means that exclusion of the general public from a- commenced the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances. And whereas the mayor and council of the borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of South River in this county of Middlesex of the state of New Jersey, that the public be excluded upon the herein specific subject matter, and that such subject matter should be so discussed as follows. Contract negotiations, attorney-client privilege. Be it further resolved that such record of the above discussion will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required. The Borough Council of the borough of South River may or may not take formal action at the conclusion of this executive session.
Motion, motion in full, close. Second by, uh, Councilman Krasinski, second by Councilman Diszimian.
Councilwoman Vallas?
Yes.
Councilman Diszimian?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
And Council President Sayuma?
Yes.